Good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. I have nothing under the report of the chairman, so we will move straight to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Shannon. Second, Christine. Any discussions on the agenda, on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. First up is our Massey committee, sorry, it says BOE committee liaisons, but Massey reps, please.
Good evening, Board of Education. I hope everyone's having a marvelous Monday. Kiara's Light Foundation will be holding their annual Chasing Kiara's Light 5K, 12K run on October 30th at Great Hollow Lake. And the Be Positive Club had a successful fundraiser last weekend at Lakeside Nutrition where they raised money for childhood cancer. The Massey Girls Volleyball Team held a Think Pink fundraiser where they sold T-shirts for breast cancer awareness. And the Massey Field Hockey Team sold tickets to raise money for Hunter Ianotti, Fawn Hollow Elementary School student who was diagnosed with stage three Hodgkin's lymphoma in June.
In sports, there was a big win at the football game last Friday with a score of forty-four to seven. Boys golf finished second in the Gulf SWCs, and girls volleyball won three to zero to Bethel last Monday. Massey Field Hockey won four to one against Shelton, has their senior night tonight. Congrats Panthers.
Spirit Week will be kicking off next Monday with themes including Anything But A Backpack with Pajama Day, Decades Duel, Color Day, Movie Characters for Freshmen, Wild West for sophomores, Superheroes for juniors, and Camo for seniors. And Friday will be Massey Colors Day. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to give a plug tomorrow night as Latin night here at Massey High School, and the Spanish club is hosting that, and if anybody wants to go there, you can. My daughter did say, "Do not promise food," as the cutoff happens, so she can't say that everybody can get food, but if you do want to come, you can show up. Hopefully there will be enough food, but it also will have a bands, and there'll be dinner dancing and everything for tomorrow night here at Massey. Anybody else have committee reports?
Yes. Donna, the Health and Safety meeting was held on ten seven for the Health and Safety Committee. Happy to report that ninety-four percent of our staff is vaccinated, the rest are testing, so that was good to hear. I do want to mention that the committee talked about the TikTok challenges that are out there. We were affected by one of the bathroom challenges, and I would implore every single parent in this district to have a conversation with your children about these. There's a list of them out there. They are, in some cases, criminal. They're against our policies, and I encourage the administration to enforce all of our laws and policies very strictly so that the kids will be held responsible for them. There has been some criminal mischief in our bathrooms, and it's just behavior that's not going to be tolerated by the district. And then, finally, the schools reported on their monthly drills, and everything has been going very well. Some minor modifications still due to COVID, but they're making advances and reporting issues to the committee so that they can get solved.
Anybody else have committee reports? All right, we will then move on to public participation. I did have a couple of people who have signed up. First up is Janos. Is it on? Bob, is that on? I could, cannot really hear him. It is? Okay, maybe try to move it a little closer, too.
Oh, yeah.
There it is.
Janos Padge, seventeen, Medovitaires. Thank you for having me again. I wanted to talk about the transgender policy being proposed. So as I was here last time, I mentioned that the definition of sex is not mentioned in the policy. It is used interchangeably with gender throughout the policy. In the beginning, it mentions there should be no discrimination based on sex, but we know that sex and gender identity are basically the same thing right now. For me, sex means males and females, both parts of the species. We know that there are dogs, cats, even plants are male or female. There are people with intersex conditions, and they're still male or female. Doctors can figure it out. Gender identity is constructed by people. There are new being made all the time. In Canada, there are actually seventy-two gender identities protected by law. In the policy, it's defined as a sense or knowledge. There are people coming out as demi-boy, moon gender. There are even people coming out as autism gender and transabled. So I'm curious as how the pronoun part of the policy is going to work because there are several pronouns being created all the time, so I assume that all of them would be protected, or is it just he, she, and they, which most people have no problem using. I'm concerned about the sex segregated health lessons because in the policy it mentions, as long as you identify as the sex, you get to be a part of that health lesson. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate for males to be learning about periods and the growth of a female body. They're already uncomfortable learning about it amongst their peers. And I'm also concerned about the adults in the policy because adults aren't mentioned, but they do come into our schools. I assume that the pool is still used by adults, too, and their children, and I want to know how that would work going into changing areas. There's a part of the policy that says, if a student says they are trans, staff will encourage, the word is encourage, students to speak to a counselor who will give the kid, sorry, child, and/or parents referral to services regarding their identity. And I just wanted to explain why I think that might be harmful. Sorry if I'm all over the place because I maybe get a little personal. So when I was eight years old, I wanted to be a girl. I genuinely wanted to be a girl. I told all the girls I wanted to be a girl. I wanted to be a Spice Girl. But I brought in dolls and makeup, and I took my parents' jewelry and even handed it out to girls because I wanted to affirm that I was a girl. I had a lot of mental issues, and there are a lot of kids like me. The World Association of Transgender Healthcare even admits that most kids with gender dysphoria will outgrow it. But what we're doing is we're teaching kids that you know your gender, and you can pick your gender. And what's happening is, in two thousand and seven, there was one gender clinic in our country. There's over three hundred now. And a lot of them are prescribing very harmful medications to kids like who I was, who won't end up being trans, who will grow out of gender identity disorders in puberty. One of these medications is called Lupron, and it was originally used to chemically castrate sex offenders. It's also used in prostate cancer. It's used in endometriosis. The medication makes females go into menopause in their twenties because it's so dangerous. When kids go on puberty blockers as young as eight in our country, they often go into cross-sex hormones, so they will not be able to have children. They will not be fertile. Most of them will have no sexual sensation in their adulthood. We're taking these human rights away from children, and I think it's very harmful. And that's why I think that policies like this that are a little bit vague, which are law in places like Canada, can harm children who will not end up being trans. And I do acknowledge that there are trans kids, there are trans people, and when we muddy the waters and we don't really think about it and actually ask these questions, we can do harm to kids like who I was. And I think that's really important to be brought up in conversation. So I hope more people do speak about the policy for it and against it. I want to hear everybody's voices. So thank you for having me, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Michelle Orr.
Good evening, Michelle Orr, twelve Marshpland Lane. During my last public participation, I explained my reasons for opposing certain aspects of the transgender policy. Following that meeting, news broke of an incident in Loudoun County, Virginia, of a girl sexually assaulted in the girls' bathroom at school by a male wearing a skirt. Two months after the incident, the boy who has not been named yet because he's a juvenile was arrested for forced sodomy. And in October, he was arrested again on different charges for allegedly assaulting a different girl at a different school. Yet, when confronted about the above incident in a Facebook discussion that Mr. Kippour took part in, he went silent. What should one assume from his silence? That he stands by his public statement, that he rejects and refutes this policy causes harm to anyone? Or maybe it's just that we need to overlook collateral damage and allow him to continue to push his policy so he can get loud while causing good trouble? Let me be clear. The main reason I am here tonight and have participated in this discussion is because I have a ten-year-old daughter. I do not appreciate a member of our BOE disregarding and brushing off severe consequences of policy like this that have already proven to cause harm to young women. I don't care what century it is. There is nothing hip or woke about putting a young woman in danger of being sexually assaulted, or by forcing them to compete against biological males in sports. If you want to make a difference in children suffering from gender dysphoria, maybe try doing something other than copying and pasting a template policy from CAPE and create a support group instead. Enforce our existing bullying policy, which covers transgender tele, transgender children, and encourage them to speak out if they are harassed or mistreated. Making a separate policy is not protecting everyone, and it's your responsibility to put forth policies with every single student in mind. I would like to think my concerns and the concerns expressed by others are not falling on deaf ears. After all, we are the parents of the children in Monroe Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mandy Wall.
Good evening. My name is Mandy Wall. Address is ninety-five Bart Road. My pronouns are they/them theirs, and I am continuing to lend my voice in this conversation about the adoption of the transgender and gender nonconforming youth policy because I spent a great deal of my young adult years in the closet, and I can tell you from my personal experience that feeling like you need to stay in the closet to hide parts of yourself out of fear of your well-being for an extended period of time is emotionally damaging and mentally draining. I was in the closet for the entirety of my time at Jockey Hollow and Massey, and I've spent most of my adult life on learning and all of the internalized shame I carried from being in the closet about my identity as a non-binary queer person for so long. I've worked with kids in various capacities over the years: classroom assistant, academic summer camp counselor, and even a lesson planner for a film summer camp. And when trans kids are allowed to be open about themselves and their identities, it really makes a difference in how they interact with their peers and engage with their work. I've seen it myself. They're happier, more confident, and more involved. Why? Because they don't have to worry about constantly maintaining, making a front out of fear that they'll be relentlessly bullied or rejected. And when I hear people say, "Oh, what about the children?" In these conversations, it implies that my existence is inherently taboo and inappropriate for kids and erases trans kids altogether. These kids, and trans people in general, aren't out to force their lifestyle on anyone. We just want to exist and go about our lives like everyone else. We're not here to rock the boat or make a fuss. We just want to be able to exist as our authentic selves, and this policy will let students do that. Trans kids deserve a childhood and school experience that isn't marked by gender dysphoria, shame, or constant depression. This policy isn't guidelines and clarifying definitions. It's suicide prevention. And to the people who think that this policy will turn the girls' bathrooms into a breeding ground for sexual assault, that's not a trans problem. That's a teach your boys that no means no and to keep their hands to themselves problem. Don't scapegoat rape culture on the trans community.
Thank you. That's all who I have had sign up prior to this evening's meeting, but I will open it up if anybody else would like to make a comment. Anybody?
Okay.
Please come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Lisa Marie Pinto, Fort Cherry Hill Circle. I'm going to be short tonight, and because I think the issue comes down to bullying. Because every, whatever everybody else has said, I'm agreeing with. Even what Mandy said, I agree with a lot of what she says they say as well. But see, I just made the mistake there. Some of the kids are feeling if they say a pronoun wrong or use an old name, they're going to be reprimanded for bullying. So I think everybody's trying to be, do as well as they can with this. And I don't know, we have to be careful that it's actual bullying. So what I wanted to say about that was, if that is what the issue is, identifying the bully, the bullies, talking with them, seeing why they're lashing out, what they have going on, I'm not a big believer in suspending everybody when they've done something wrong, but trying to figure out what they did wrong and why they're doing it, because they're probably hurting, too. And we've heard the past couple of weeks, it takes a village. Well, it takes, the bullies part of the village. Figure out what's going wrong with this kid if he's making fun of someone. I mean, it's simple. Every week, we keep talking about the same thing. We just got off of being in that house for a year. Like, let's talk about that, like how the kids don't feel like they learned anything. We just keep talking about the same thing over and over. If the bullies are the problem, then deal with the bullies. I mean, that's all I really have to say about it tonight. Kind of done with it.
Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else? All right, okay, now we will move on then. Thank you, everybody. We will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Mr. Ron, if you want, I just want this to be the fund activity statement?
Sure. So pages forty-three through forty-five of your packet include the Board of Ed General Fund operating budget activity through June, through September thirtieth. So through September thirtieth, there's, you know, at this point, there's really no glaring issues in the, in the budget. There's still some budget transfers that require, need to be made in the salary accounts. You'll see a couple are negative. We do need to move some money there, but no, no issues. That's just a matter of moving bodies that were budgeted in one place and moved to another, so. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions on anything at this time on operating budget.
Anybody have questions? Nope.
As far as the, let me just move over to... So on page fifty-seven, you've got the enterprise and special revenue account activity year to date. You'll see Monroe Early Learning Center at this time has a negative balance, fund balance. That's just because the salaries are encumbered for the year. So as we collect revenues through the year, that'll correct itself. And that's pretty much the only thing I wanted to point out there. Joe will be, you know, will be discussing the ESAR and ARPESAR grants next, which will kind of, I'll address something regarding ARPESAR at that time.
Does anybody have any questions on the enterprise or special revenue accounts? All right.
Great. I just, I think we have a relatively short report here tonight. I did want to share the, the actual ESAR grants. As we prepare for our next Board of Finance meeting, thought it'd be important to show the actual grant applications for ESAR II and ESAR III. I don't want to go through them, you know, line by line. They're pretty detailed. I want to thank, I think Sheila's here somewhere. There's Sheila. Sheila has done a tremendous amount of work in the last, the last two years on, you know, first the coronavirus relief funds, then ESAR II and ARPESAR. And she did a lot of this work putting this together, working really closely with Ron and with Linda. So, you know, I just want to be as transparent as, as possible so folks understand the process when we put, when we put these grants in. So, so they're there for everybody. You know, I do have, this was in there, just the, you know, just a reminder, too, the money was supposed to be spent in four priority areas. The first one was academic support, learning loss, learning acceleration. The second one was in either family and community connections. The third was in school safety and social emotional well-being of students and staff. And the last one could be in remote learning, staff development, and the digital divide. This is a, this spreadsheet kind of provides a breakdown of the work that was done in those, in those grants. So if you take a look at it here, and if I can, remember, we've talked about, and, you know, the conversation so far has been, you know, there's, in the ESAR II, and more so in the ESAR, in the ARPESAR, is a lot of, we've put a lot of staff in there. I want to talk about that because that's going to be part of the conversation with, with the Board of Finance. But if you look in our ESAR II grant, these are all the, all of the either positions or programs that we've, that we've put into this grant for the ESAR II, which stood to tune of about five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And you see what we had done in there. We had reinstituted the K five math coordinator that was out of the need. We know that math took a, you know, both ELA and math, you know, learning in general took a hit last year. The biggest hit taken, seen around the state, around the country, and definitely in Monroe, was in math. So getting the math coordinator back in to, you know, align curriculum for all of our K five teachers was really important for us. The addition, you know, for mental health support to the social worker, the school psychologist. We also added some, we call our high-impact math supports at our, at our, each of our elementary schools. So basically, those are like math tutors to help with any, any work in specifically geared towards math. Our, the middle school ran a summer school program this year that was open, in addition to our special education summer school, the middle school ran a, you know, a summer program for all students, regular ed or special ed. Both the middle school and high school, you know, did a lot of training in SRBI Tier One learning for teachers and stuff that went into classrooms, that, you know, things that teachers could do in the classroom before getting to those higher structured Tier Two and Tier Three intervention strategies. Sheila put in, calculated some benefits into this. We talked about, you know, bringing back teacher college and having that work done at the elementary school. So that was done with our ESAR II money. We had to use some of that money for new classroom materials for, remember, we added four classes at the elementary level, so we used some of the ESAR II money for that. And then there was a software program, you know, a little money for a software program, and then TC materials that we were able to purchase there. So that, that was one piece of that. And that's basically the breakdown of, you know, those large grants that, there's, if you, if you look at the grants, there's a lot of work that goes into writing them. Each area, we had to write SMART goals for the, for, for each thing that we wanted to do, you know, to get accomplished in the grant. Like I said, as of right now, you know, I would love to not be using our ARPESAR money for the, for this staffing, but I just want to make sure that we can pay for it. And, you know, depending on, you know, where we end up with our surplus and with the work that we're going to do with the Board of Finance, you know, I had, I had to put this stuff in to make sure we were covered, at least for this year. And we put them in for this year and next year. Sheila, we can amend the grant process throughout the whole duration of the grant. So all the way up until, is it September of twenty-four? I think, or is it September of twenty-three?
ARPESAR is September of twenty-three.
September of twenty-three. So if you see, you know, so the one million dollars that we have in ARP, it's really heavily, you know, it's heavy in staffing. Our two kindergarten teachers, our other two elementary school teachers turned out to be a grade three at Fawn Hollow and ultimately a grade four after some moving around at Stephanie. We talked about adding more support for, for mental health, mental well-being, our behavior techs at each of our elementary school, at all of our schools, making sure we had a behavior tech at each of those schools. This, this part down here is the stuff that's kind of still out there. Originally, here's the one variation you'll see. If you go through the ARPESAR grant, you'll see that we originally had earmarked approximately three hundred thousand dollars. You know, we have some plans. The administrators have some plans of some programming that we'd like to do to be able to address learning loss if we don't, you know, have to pay off for staffing. One of, one of the pieces was a tutoring program. We, you know, one of the key things for learning acceleration was to really do targeted intervention at students. And we had, we were thinking of doing a pretty robust tutoring program, you know, especially at the middle school and high school, where staff would be available to meet with kids, whether it's in person or virtually, and have them available to do that throughout, throughout the course of the year. Originally, in the grant, we had earmarked about three hundred thousand dollars for that. But as, again, this hasn't been changed in the grants, and it will be amended if we have to go this route. But just to keep track of things, remember when Darlene was here, we talked about our additions in special education. So this was originally about three hundred thousand dollars. Now it's sixty-five thousand. And this other stuff, the special education teacher, luncheon, recess para, some grade five music stipends, which I'll talk about in a second, add up to that difference between the three hundred thousand that we originally, that we had originally earmarked for, for the tutoring program. So if we have to go this route, you know, we'll go this route. The grade five music stipends, with the addition of our new, of all the sections that we have, we're not able to cover the band lesson, not the band lessons, but the band ensembles that we, that we used to do with before school. Because what was happening before is we would have staff that would start their day at one school and finish their day at another school. But now, because we've added four sections at the elementary school, our, our, our staff is completely spread out. So the only way we would be able to get, get these students some kind of ensemble experience is if we can offer these grade five music stipends. You know, I think it's, it's great for music. It's also great for kids. Anything that we can do to get kids socially engaged with each other right now, you know, I would fight for and strongly advocate that we do. So I don't want to go too in-depth. If anyone has any questions about it, absolutely, and I'll try to answer them. I know Sheila's probably been more well-versed than I am in this, and Ron, but.
Joe, I just wanted to mention from an accounting perspective, the ESAR II grant is being accounted for in the grant fund, which you'll see on page fifty-eight in your packet. Currently, the ARPESAR is in the operating budget until we get further clarity on what direction, you know, from the Board of Finance.
Also, Ron, it's not gone through the approval process in the State Department of Ed yet. It's been an initial review, but I'm waiting for the financial review, and then we get our letter, because you'll see the letters that are in the other grants. We haven't gotten it for ARPESAR yet.
Two questions. The behavior tech salaries that you have in there, are those expected to continue after twenty-two, twenty-three?
Darlene and Jen, behavior techs after twenty-two, twenty-three?
I believe that, you know, that this is something that we've been trying to do in light because, I mean, COVID just, you know, made us realize that kids are coming back. They're dysregulated. We need to, you know, we need to put something into place now. The feedback that I've gotten from all the buildings is just having that one extra person in there that troubles you, you know, behaviors arise, and it's still positive. So that would be something that we would look to discuss.
I've said this, and we use terms like, you know, the kids having behaviors. The fact of the matter is, our kids are hurting right now, and we're seeing it manifest. And I, they're hurting, and they're also, when we talk about behaviors, it's manifesting itself very differently across, across the spectrum, from kindergarten to grade twelve. And we're seeing a lot of, and I guess, you know, we shouldn't be surprised. I think we're surprised because it's, it's the first time we're seeing it, you know, because we're kind of back in school this year. But it's, you know, we have kids that are in kindergarten, first grade, that, you know, think about, we've talked about this before, our ninth graders, their last full year of regular school was in sixth grade. And even this year is not regular. It's not going to be, you know, hopefully next year, you know, we're not going to have masks on, and they're going to be able to, you know, we're not going to be limiting volunteers and doing all this other stuff. But it's going to be a long time since these kids have experienced regular school. And I'm sure, Alan, you're seeing it at your school at the elementary level. I mean, we're seeing kids that, you know, non-verbal, non-communicative, because some of them missed preschool. They didn't get any of that, that socialization in preschool. We're seeing, you know, we're seeing some behaviors at the high school that are kind of like middle school behaviors. And, you know, when we look at it, well, the last time they were really in school was in, in middle school. So, you know, I think that's, it's an important piece, because we say it a lot, and we say things like, oh, you know, behaviors and behaviors. But, you know, my thing is, kids are, you know, in addition to the academic loss, for sure, there's clearly there was, you know, a hit to academics. But, you know, I think our kids are hurting, and, you know, we got to do everything we can to, to support them. Nick?
I just wanted to piggyback on that, really. And I know that this is probably going to be discussed in the Board of Finance, and there's more discussions to be had. But this, the ARPESAR funding is, the accounting of it, I'm very concerned about, which is that the behavior texts is, we can discuss that. You know, if those are going to continue after twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, then I would argue that those are operating expenditures, right? K teacher, K teacher, grade three, grade three teacher, grade four teacher, those are operating expenditures, right? And I would love to see... And I would love to see those funds, that's 300, that's 400 grand between the behavior texts and the teachers, that we should be using to mitigate the things that you're talking about, right? Grant funding isn't supposed to be used for operating expenditures. And the Board of Education just returned, you know, $2 million to the town. And if you take those, at least, at the very least, putting the behavior text aside for a second, if you take those four teacher positions and put them in the Op-X budget, like they should be for the upcoming budget cycle, on top of your contractual increases, you're already starting at this, you know, at a much higher, at 300 grand over where you would be just with normal contractual increases. So I think I'm just a little concerned about that. I mean, I don't know the logistics of it, right? Would it have to be a special appropriation that would then need a town meeting, which is then a whole can of worms? But I think it would be cleaner and more appropriate if the Board of Education got money transferred back to it from the surplus, from the Board of Finance, through the proper procedures, to at least cover the salaries which are operating expenditures, right? Increased population growth isn't due to learning loss. There are really things that are social, emotional loss, learning loss, that we need to address with some of the things you're talking about. So I think just over the next couple of months, if the surplus goes back and we figure things out, we should look at that.
No, it's a concern because you are going to have a cliff. You're going to have a cliff where you need these, the staff because you have these students here. And if it doesn't get into the budget, what do you do? You can't just say, hey, we're closing down this class and everybody's going to be in a class of 40.
Even for this year, like the funds should be, I mean, I'm just, I'm just one person, but I'm just saying the funds should be, for this year, transferred to the Board of Ed, even just to cover those salaries, to make the accounting better.
Didn't we already ask the Board of Finance?
Yes.
And.
What was the rationale behind them saying no to us?
The rationale was that the changes to the 10-248 account is now that there is no oversight and they wanted oversight and they don't want to give the control to us just to be able to spend it any way we would like to spend it, in a nutshell.
I mean, my, my feeling on that is the door is not entirely closed on that yet. It, it may not be handled through the 10-248A. It might be a special appropriation, but I think you end up in the same place. You just have to jump through different hoops to get there.
I think that's the job. Darlene and I are going to, are meeting tomorrow, put our presentation together, kind of amalgamate all of this stuff, you know, the enrollment stuff that we've been talking about, the special education, you know, stuff that Darlene's been talking about now for a while with, with this stuff here. And I want them to see the, you know, I want everyone to see, and I wanted you to see it first, the, you know, the actual grant applications. It's kind of dry, but the, the short notes are right there. But just wanted to have everything on, on the table. And that's our, part of our responsibility now is to, to make that case.
So you're going to share that with the Board of Finance?
Yes, yes.
George.
Can you, I might have missed the discussion on this behavior text. What, what is, what is that role?
George, you want to actually tell them exactly? You'd probably do a better job of it than I would.
So they, they are trained in behavior, behavior strategies to assist children when they're escalating. They look, look for what, what is the function of behavior and then we try to manage that behavior. So we have one in every building who is working with parents. There are professional teachers in the building to help them with certain kids. They do, they can do a function of behavior analysis on the kids. They, they, you know, they observe the children and they try to figure out, you know, what, what's going on with this child and how do we make everyone work. So, and like Joe said, we have so many, we have so many young children, and Alan and I have talked about this on the way in, so many young children who just don't, they just, they haven't been in a school setting and they just don't know what the, what the parameters are and they just don't even know those behaviors. And again, every child is an individual and they act out differently. So, you know, behaviors could be just a passive prime, you could be, you know, laughing out. But, you know, we try, behavior texts try to steer them from those behaviors that are not socially appropriate into behaviors that we have.
All right. Put more questions on that. Thank you for the explanation. So you've got one at Monroe Elementary, which covers both the elementary grades and pre- academy.
I, I've got two at Monroe Elementary.
You've got two at Monroe Elementary already?
Because there was one at Monroe Elementary already, but the preschool, preschool has gotten so big, we have three full classes.
So you got two there.
So we have one dedicated to the preschool and then one dedicated to the rest.
Okay. What about Fawn Hollow? How many do we have there?
One.
And Jackie Hollow?
One.
STEM?
STEM shares, it's one.
STEM has one? What about Stepney? Because I don't see it there.
One.
Stepney's got one too.
Stepney already had one, that's why.
Got it. Okay. So this one, that, got it. So it's not being funded by this.
Right.
So in addition to these behavior texts, we also have four of the other staff members that are routinely involved with special needs children.
We have.
Paras?
We have para educators. We have special education teachers. We have occupational therapists, physical therapists. We have one B C D A in the district, school psychologists, speech and language, and we have, I'm trying to think, code lunch or the whole.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and services that can be available to the students.
Okay. So there's a lot of staff.
A lot of staff.
That's supporting these kids. Right. Okay. And now we're also looking at hiring another special education teacher for STEM and Matic.
Correct.
So with all of that, all of that in place, we're diverting $250,000 almost from after school and evening tutoring, which benefits the entire population of the Monroe School System, to other areas, the large part of which is going to special ed.
If that, if, if we have to use the grant, yes.
But behavior texts are not only for special education.
No, they're not.
Behavior texts are for everybody.
George, if it's like, if there's like a student in the classroom that's emotionally dysregulated and needs to be removed from the classroom and is being disruptive or maybe doing other things, the behavioral person would come in and they specialize in working with those type of students to de-escalate them. And they would work on a plan with the teacher, like, oh, if Johnny, if you notice this trigger in Johnny, you know, we're going to do so-and-so, we're going to put these strategies in place. So they would work with the teacher and the student.
So thank you for that, Alan. That does help to quantify that. But still, it stands that we're, we're looking at both special needs and students with behavioral issues. And we're directing a ton of these funds to that population, but we've cut almost everything out of, 75% we've cut out of after-school and evening tutoring, which benefits the entire population. So why are we, why are we making that decision? Is there not enough interest in after-school and evening tutoring? And that's what's driving it? Because I would say that if we are beneficiaries of a lot of this funding, that we apply that across the board as much as possible.
I think this, I think the behavioral people, it, it's not special ed or kids who are, it's regular education kids who have had COVID for two years that are having social, emotional issues, but they're regular education kids.
Understood. No, I understood. And I, and I said that.
You're studying academic versus social.
I said that, but what I'm saying is that you're directing a ton of funds at that portion of population.
Right.
But the portion of the population, not a portion, the entire population.
For academic help.
For academics could be benefited by after-school and evening tutoring.
Right. But you've also done that in the other one.
Yet we're diverting 80% of the funding from that line to areas with a smaller segment of the population.
And it's a segment of the population that's, I, if you visit the classes, it's, it's incredibly challenging for all kids. And if we don't get, if we don't get a handle on that, the kids are going to be missing out tremendously.
I can respect that. But after everybody, every student in, in Monroe experienced almost a year of learning loss, every student in Monroe can benefit from tutoring.
Have you sent out any survey to figure out interest, to know how much you would need in the tutoring piece of it? Because what is it, 65,000? Right? Is that what you left?
That's what we're leaving. A survey to.
The parents, to see, you know what I mean, to get a gauge. Is it 65,000? Is it 300,000? Or is there some room like where we may be able to fund that, which would be important?
And we haven't yet because we haven't, I didn't know what we were going to, what we were going to do.
I mean, I think it's.
Have you expended any of these funds yet?
Yes.
You have?
You have to, because you had to hire four teachers.
But I think sending a survey for the tutoring piece.
So if we're expending the funds, but we don't know what the interest is or the need is because we haven't assessed it for the tutoring, have we done that?
We have not sent a.
Okay. So that's, that's a problem that I have, is that you've just cut 80% of that line, which could benefit the entire district without even knowing what the need is there.
I know right now what the need is in the classrooms for the kids. I've been walking around the buildings, George. It's, when I, I'm trying not to underestimate how badly kids are, how badly kids are affected and how that's affecting classrooms.
But how is that, how are kids affected, all kids affected academically?
Because if kids are having issues in the classroom, they're not going to learn.
I understand that. Certain kids that have the issues will not learn and that will be disrupted for the.
For everyone.
I understand that. Okay? So that does need to be addressed. My problem is that we just cut 75, 80% out of that line that benefits the entire district to fund other stuff. And I just don't get that, when we're supposed to be focused on academics and not S E L.
You see, George, that's a problem.
George, George, that's a problem for all.
Can you go back?
George, the law.
I'm, I'm making a point. You can make a point afterwards.
George, the law says.
If you don't think that that's important, that tutoring is important, then you can make that point.
The law, the law says that S E L is just as important as academic.
Well, it's, it's. Fine. That we're, we're funding it. And we're funding it through normal channels and we're funding it through here. My problem is that we just took all that money out of that line without assessing what the need is for academic support for everyone that has experienced learning loss over the course of the year, last year, and it, now it's gone. Or it's totally not, it's not where we thought it should be. So the assessment should be done before funds are reallocated anywhere else to determine what the needs are. And that should, that should be provided across the, the entire population. It's something that can benefit the entire population.
Can you go back to the, the, what we're using the first set of S R money for? If you look there, there are, in, in the first set of S R money, you are hiring math supports at all the different schools academically to bring kids up to date on math. So it's not like you're not addressing, you're not addressing the academics. You're addressing the academics because you're hiring all these people to address the math issue. And you're hiring people to address the, you know, any issue.
All this stuff here, George. The, the first thing to do is, is bring back the K five math coordinator.
Okay, understood. Okay, very good.
High impact math here.
Good.
The summer school program at Jackie Hollow was for, was for, for all kids. S R B I tier one training, that's in, in classroom training to help the kids in, you know, all kids right in the classroom. Teachers college, this is direct instruction, right, right into, right into the classroom.
Okay, got it. Not all of that. Those are all smaller dollar amounts. Granted, there's a number of them there, but it does not equate to 300, $3,000 that we had allocated to that other line. And I'll say that, that if, if, if we're just ready to get rid of $300,000 and move it somewhere else and there's no assessment that was done for that, it doesn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. You know, obviously, we thought that that money was warranted to be in that line to suit that purpose. And now we're, we're saying that it's not. So I just, I want to know why we're making that assumption.
And my, so to me, it's because we have more pressing needs right now. And I, I would love, I would, I would love to do that. And the purpose of this, George, and the purpose of, of sharing this and sharing this with you guys and with the Board of Finance is, I hope we can, I'm hoping that some of this stuff can get picked up in an appropriation or in some.
Right.
So we can't do.
So you can bring it back and fund it.
I want to get this money back.
But I still think it would be good.
But if we don't, I need to, I need to, I need to cover this somewhere. This is all right now, we haven't, you know, we haven't gotten the, we haven't gotten the ARPESR money yet. But my goal is hopefully we can get most, if not all, of this stuff back through whatever channel it is. And that's, that's a conversation with the, with the Board of Finance. Because yes, I want to do a, a robust tutoring program for, for all kids.
Is it going to be recommended by the teachers? Or is it going to be like, as a parent, I would like my child to get these tutorings? Like, or you haven't really gotten that far yet?
We haven't gotten that far because of this. But I think what we've talked about is a little of both, that we want to, we want to identify kids that would need it, have teachers go out and identify, and then also open it up for parents.
So if you can get the teachers' salaries funded through the Board of Finance, then that money can go, that will be, and that would be the first thing is the tutoring program.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect.
Your goal is to get the special education teacher.
I mean, everything, it's, it's a trickle-down effect. If there's behavioral issues in the classroom, yeah, it's going to trickle down to the education piece of it and not just the child who's having the behavioral issues, everybody around them. So you have to get that under control and then come to the next layer. So I think that tutoring is very important.
Very important. I, I don't.
And I would like to see it funded somehow.
Yeah.
But I get it. You have to work your way out.
And you do, Kristin. I applaud you. I mean, that's, that's the thing. I, I think that, you know, if, if Jerry's loud and Jerry's got, got S E L problems in a class, you've got 30 kids in that class. Jerry, me, I could create such a disturbance that 20 other kids can't get the information. We've all seen this. We've all been there.
Exactly. No, I agree. I just would really like to, I think the tutoring program would be very, like, in George's point though, covering a larger capacity of the students. So I would like to see that funded. So hopefully, we can get Board of Finance to agree to cover the salaries, which should not really be funded in this program.
Correct. This should, this.
That's really what it comes down to.
What it comes down to is, we, our population has grown by 150 students and we have no other choice but to fund four classroom teachers and a special education teacher.
That really should not be used.
Out of this funds, which should not be funded out of this.
I agree. I agree.
I had a quick question. As I said earlier regarding, that you can change the allocation after the fact?
Yes, we can.
So if you just, what would be your, how that would work after, if, after we've already?
It's like 400,000.
Can I, if I can give a example, when I originally put in S R two, which is the top chart that Joe showed you, we had put in for a summer school for Jackie Hollow, which you saw, but we had also, I wrote the grant for a mathic summer school for regular education students. I couldn't run it because we didn't have enough teachers to teach it or students who were interested in it. So we ended up, there was another $3,000 for a software program. That was the Play-Doh software. So that students who were doing summer schools would do it on their own and they had a teacher, certified teacher who checks in with them on that program. But I had originally budgeted for the same amount, almost $20,000, with the high school teachers running a summer school program. But then I had to shift that because it didn't run this on. So there are times that you can make adjustments. You have to quantify, you know, explain why you're making the changes to it. And then the state has to reapprove your application.
So you're basically just amending the application.
Correct.
So if we get funded for the teachers, you can have that piece amended and say, this is what it's going to?
Yep. And then have that approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Nick? I just wanted to say, because there's only a few weeks left and I can't say this anymore, but George, I agree with you that, going back to my first comment, one of the other things I heard that I do want to address is, the question I got was, well, why did the superintendent ask for the money sooner? And the answer is, the kids were coming in by the day, by the week. The superintendent didn't know until a week or two or three before school started where people were going to have to go. So it's not that Joe didn't know how many teachers he was going to need. The students were coming in at the end of August. You were making adjustments probably even after school started. So I think that, I just want to really kind of put that one to bed. But I think that all this discussion goes back to, these are operating expenditures. And the first question I asked about. about the behavior techs and the idea to keep them going after 2022, 2023 is, I would argue that that then is also an operational expenditure, right? Because when you have grant-funded positions, they're usually for a targeted thing, for a targeted timeframe, but if they're gonna continue adding an item for a particular purpose, then those should be OpEx, those shouldn't be grant-funded. So those should also be part of an ask back, which can then go into the tutoring line, which I agree about.
Very true.
Anybody else? Alrighty.
So pre-COVID, we had one behavioral tech at Stepney?
And one at Monroe.
For the preschool, right?
And one, one at R two, K five, Monroe Well, and one.
And one at Stepney. But Fawn Hallow and the other schools did not have any, they weren't shared or anything? No?
And the behavioral techs work under the DCBA, which is Board Certified Behavioral Analysis Analyst, and they basically give those people strategies to use, and quite, quite frankly, those behavioral techs are walking around the buildings with a.
I'm just curious why they were at two of the elementary schools and not all three?
Yeah. I think initially at Monroe Well, because a lot of the students from pre-K.
Right.
A lot of them stayed, and then are not going back to their neighborhood school and stayed at Monroe Well.
But then you had Stepney.
And we had Stepney.
Well, we had, we, we had, we go by need.
Right.
Where the needs are, so, and those people can, we did, actually, when we first had the, we had one start at Stepney, and then we had another one at Stepney, but then we had a need at Monroe Well, so we, that was.
Gotcha. I was just curious, if Fawn Hallow had the need, could you send that person over or no?
Yeah, well, it's kind of difficult right now.
No, before this?
Yeah, before that.
Like, before this?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying, yeah, so there was a need for this pre-COVID.
Yeah.
Obviously more now. So again, I agree, it needs to go with everything else.
And I think the staff, I think the staff agree that it's, it's been, you know, I've gotten such positive feedback, it's been very helpful to them to learn the strategies, to have somebody there who can just kind of come in when there is an issue or a trouble shoot, and only have one PCBA in the district, she can't be all.
Anybody else, Jeff?
Joe, just to go back to this, is there any chance that we might see any of these lines in this upcoming budget or the 22, 23 budget?
Yes. Yeah.
You're definitely gonna see the five staff members.
The staff members and the behavioral techs, right? Those are, those, all those line items?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't see.
Even, I, I, the reason I ask the question is because if you meet with the, if something changes with the town, right, and, and what it will pull you out, how, I guess, what would the funds, in a supportive situation, how would we address it with funding?
And that's, yeah, we're meeting with, I mean, there's a lot of program, like, you know, obviously boosting the tutoring program, we have our administrative team putting together, hey, this is what we'd like to use, these, this is, these are the things.
So in other words, you have stuff behind this, this is what you prioritize as the most important, most pressing?
Because it's the stuff we have right in front of us right now.
Right. This, you had no choice.
Yeah.
But a lot of these will be in our budget.
Yeah.
Because you have the student population to justify the teachers, the band, or was it the music, all those things, right?
I think, yeah, I think all those staff.
Almost everything on that list.
All of that should be in, in there.
Right.
You're gonna have to build that in the budget.
Right.
No, I agree, I, I just.
Right.
But I think there's also an argument to be made in the upcoming budget, when those lines go into the operating budget as they should be, that the surplus that we gave back, not all of it, but part of it could be used to offset some of the, some of the increases, because we all know that when the budget drops and the number comes out, the number is the story, right? And that's all.
Right, and those positions, and I'm not even adding the behavioral techs, but just the five positions add up to $400,000.
Yep.
About five, 600,000 is 1% of a budget increase.
Right.
So now you're already at, without having any contractual obligations, you already have a 1% budget increase.
And that's without knowing what next year's enrollment's gonna be.
Correct.
We have no idea what kindergarten will look like. It will be a repeat of this year?
Yeah.
Will people continue moving to the now?
Right, we won't know. We don't know who moved in, who has kids entering kindergarten, right? I mean, that's all unknown. We don't know that till February and on.
Yeah.
Yep.
Talk about bus drivers?
Yep.
They're more fun. But I have to say, we've been more, more fortunate than some districts around the state, and then our buses have been able to accommodate our, our needs to and from school. I know, we've talked about the issues we've had with, you know, covering athletics. You know, in any given year, All-Star would have eight to 10 substitute bus drivers. This year, they've had, they've had zero. And I know they've worked incredibly hard, I'm thankful for their efforts. I know there are times when Mike Lawler, who's the manager there, and Sue, the dispatcher, have actually had to go out and cover runs, sometimes just one of them, and then there have been a couple of times where both of them have had to close the office and, and drive for us. Jack and I met with Mike last, last week, and they are hoping to bring a new driver on, and there's another possibility of another driver who's gonna return to the company, but just like any organization right now, they're also dealing with leaves and, and things like that. So, you know, it may end up, it may end up being a wash, you know, in the long run. And I know this kind of manifested itself last Monday, I don't know if you guys were aware, but we had only one, I mean, we were able to cover all of our runs, which we've been fortunate with that, but we only had one bus for the late bus, so kids were on the late bus, you know, if you took the late bus from Massacre, Jackie Hall that day, you were on the bus for a, a really long time. But you got, you were able to get, able to get home. So, you know, like I said, Jack and I met with Mike, we've talked about worst-case scenarios, and I just wanted to keep you folks aware, because I wanna send an email out to the district, in the event, and, you know, I, I hope it doesn't happen, but in the event that we have a situation where we don't have enough drivers, you know, what are we gonna do? And what will happen is, we will end up having to delay one of our mid-tier runs. The mid-tier runs, so our first tier is MASCIC, our third tier is Jackie, I'm sorry, Fawn Hall and Stepney. The mid-tier runs, the two schools that start in the middle, are Monroe Well and Jackie Hall. During that, during that part of the day, every one of our buses is deployed. They're not all deployed in the first tier, they're not all deployed in the third tier, but they're all deployed in the second tier. So in, in the event that something were to happen, and they didn't have enough drivers to cover, they would have, we would probably have to notify those families through school messenger. That's why I wanna just get something out to families tomorrow to say, hey, if this were to happen, you would get a school messenger emergency alert. We can do it by bus, so anyone who's on bus, you know, 17, I'm just making up a number, who was ever on a, on a particular bus, would get the email, text, and phone call saying that, you know, there's gonna be a delay of your bus, it's probably about a two-hour delay because the third tier would have to do their run, and then a bus would have to come off that, after that tier and go pick up, you know, you know, from Monroe Elementary, for example. You know, obviously, any messaging out, the parents would say that the bus is gonna be approximately two hours late today, you know, parents have their option to obviously drive their kids to school or wait the two hours and have them get picked up later. I hope we don't get to that situation. We have not gotten to that situation yet, but I don't want us to get to that situ, you know, if we do have to get to that situation, I don't want us just, you know, randomly sending out emails to people that have had no, you know, no heads up on it. So, like I said, I know All-Star has been a good partner with us, they've been looking at every option, looking at ways to try to double up buses in these cases if they, if they had to, but, you know, I just wanna, I'd rather be prepared and not have to do it than not be prepared and have to do it.
So you're not delaying school?
Not delaying.
You're just delaying the bus for that particular school?
Exactly.
So Jackie Hall or Monroe Well?
Yeah. And the, you know, that was the original, you know, one of the original conversations was, oh, we can just delay the school, but we don't wanna delay a whole school.
Right, right.
Knowing that a lot of kids will get a ride.
Right.
Parents will just end up driving them.
Just taking them.
Or, you know, or they can just wait, so.
Now, as playing devil's advocate for the parent's side, I'm gonna say, well, my kid has been delayed two hours, what are they doing? Who's got the, who's got the, you know, for lack of better words, supervision over them? What are they gonna be doing? Because you have kindergartners all the way up to, like I said, say, fifth graders in the elementary level, obviously different in the middle school level, but who's supervising the kids? Where are they being supervised? How many kids are we talking about? You know, those are gonna be parents' questions. I'm trying to anticipate that you may wanna cover on your.
Are you talking about in the afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's delayed.
Yeah. Yeah, I was talking more about the mornings, but you're right, in the afternoons. When we met with Mike, he, he seemed to indicate that the after, I don't totally understand it, but the afternoon is not as big of a concern.
More of a time flexibility within the runs in the afternoon that he's not as concerned with keeping timely in terms of, in terms of pickup at the end of the school day.
So this is just the morning?
This is more morning.
It's more of a morning issue?
I get it, because you have to get to school by a certain time. You could be 15 minutes late to school, right? Or 20 minutes late to school, they're still sitting at the school parking lot and getting on the bus.
Yeah.
You have to get them to school by a certain time in the morning, so you're pushing through that.
Yeah.
So I get why the morning would be more pressing than the afternoon.
Yeah.
Because the buses roll in at different times.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And they talked about doubling up buses, and I think it's a little easier to do that in the afternoon. So, yeah, it seems like it's more of an afternoon issue.
Okay. It's a more of a morning issue.
I mean, I'm sorry, yes, more of a morning issue. Yeah.
Is All-Star doing anything to address the driver shortage? Like, are they assessing their wages, their wages or rates against other, their competition? Try to attract more talent?
You know, you know, the National Guard is driving buses in Massachusetts?
Yeah. It's, it's a countrywide issue.
No, I, no, I understand that, but are they doing anything to try to get more drivers on the payroll?
I know they're actively recruiting, I don't know if, you know, I don't know exactly what they're doing with wages, I could, I could ask them, though.
And how do they apportion the drivers? Because they obviously have a number of contracts, I, I would assume in the area. So how did, how did they apportion the drivers to, say, Monroe over another town?
When, I think, when the, when the contract was moved from the first student before, the drivers that were here stayed here. You know, Mike said, we were one of the more fortunate towns for a while, like I said, we had eight to 10 substitute drivers. He was actually lending drivers from Monroe to other, to other towns to help cover, cover runs, but we're just not in that situation, you know, now, to obviously.
I think comparatively, we're probably still in better straits than a number of the communities around us.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay, so if we have a need, they're gonna, they're gonna try to fill that need, they're not gonna?
They're not gonna send our driver somewhere else.
So, or, or new recruits that come in somewhere else, they're gonna address the need.
They were offering bonuses to people that become bus drivers.
Some district.
That's kind of what I was asking.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I don't think they've gone that far.
Not yet from Monroe.
Which was a double-edged sword because in the current drivers, you know?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions on that? Okay. We have no old business this evening, so we will move on to new business, and we have two policies of the first review. The first one is 6159 Individualized Education Program slash Special Education Program, and 4212.42, which is drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. George, do you wanna discuss them?
Yes, so the first one merely deals with the change in the educational age requirement by the state from age 21 to age 22. So students receiving special education will remain eligible for such services up until their 22nd birthday, or until they graduate from high school with a regular high school diploma, whichever comes first. So 22, or if they get a diploma prior to 22, but that changed from 21, age 21 to 22. The second is regarding drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers, as well as the training and administration of F and F. So first, that the transportation provider will comply with federal regulations to establish a drug and alcohol tax testing program, and that they will also require the provider to conduct a full query of the Border Border Carrier Safety Administration's Drug and Alcohol Clearing House to obtain information about the driver's eligibility, as well, that they train their drivers on the identification, signs, and symptoms of anaphylaxis, and the administration of F and F. The, the current provider, All-Star, already complies with both of these mandates.
Okay. Does anybody have questions?
Alan, just, just one, if I can go, probably go to Darlene on this one. Darlene, the 21 to 22-year-old, that was a court decision, correct?
Correct.
That move, do you know if that's being challenged at all, appealed?
It was challenged, but it's, it's now, now well.
That's it, okay. All right, thank you. Yep.
Anybody else? All right, these, I'm sorry, these two policies will be on our agenda for our next meeting, which is, I think, November 1st, for a second review and vote anticipated, and I know Jerry was, like, itching, so Jerry?
Motion to Jerry.
The second, Shannon, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Night, everybody, thank you so much.